All right, we're good to go.
All set?
Can everybody keep their videos off until it's their turn to speak, please? It makes it easier. Thank you.
Okay, all set Jeff?
Yep.
All right. All right. So, good evening, everyone. Just like to welcome everybody to the November meeting of the Town of Brighton zoning board of appeals. Just a couple little things before we start the meeting that we have the Zoom conferences, you know, tonight, we've used it a few times. It seems to work out well. So just please pay attention to the muting and you know, if you can indicate when it's your turn to speak, who's speaking, so we keep the meeting moving along, that would be appreciated. Okay, so Rick, could you call? I will call the meeting to order. Can you call the roll?
Ms. Schwartz?
Here.
Ms. Thompson's right?
Yeah.
Ms. Dale?
Yeah.
Mr. Mites?
Here.
Ms. Watson?
Yeah.
Ms. Schmidt?
Here.
Please let the record show that all members are present.
Very good. Okay, so we have two sets of minutes. We have the September meeting and the October meeting.
Then it's just
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, did the was the meeting properly advertised, Mr. Stefano?
Yes, Mr. Chairman is advertised in the October 29th, 2020 Brighton Windsor Post.
Okay, and prior also, do you have any other correspondence or anything that you want to let the board know?
I did send you guys over some communications along with the final agenda. I don't know if anybody has any questions regarding anything they've received or any of the applications.
Rick, could you speak up a little bit more, maybe, please?
Sure, I can try.
Thank you.
Better?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Okay, so let's move on to the minutes. We have the September minutes. Does anyone have any corrections or additions? September? Nothing? Okay, would somebody be willing to make a motion for those minutes?
So moved, number right.
And a second, please?
My second, Schmidt.
Thank you, good. Okay.
Motion is to approve the September minutes. Ms. Schwartz?
Abstain.
Ms. Thompson's right?
Uh, yes.
Ms. Dale? Mr. Mites?
Yes.
Ms. Watson?
Abstain.
Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Motion to approve carries.
Okay, and let's move to the October minutes. Do we have any additions or corrections there?
You guys don't have the October minutes.
Oh, I thought we got both.
No, you got a second set of September minutes because the first set was sent to you.
Oh, okay, okay.
There was a, a
Okay.
Copying error on
Copying logistical error, okay. All right, so let's, uh, let's move along to then the agenda. And we're starting with the agenda for the month of November.
Well, application 11 A O one twenty, application John Steiner contractor and Jennifer Gorankov Katz, owner of property located at 141 Chelmsford Road for area variances from section two oh five dash two to allow an existing detached garage to be attached to the principal structure with an enclosed addition resulting in a rear setback of 5.7 feet, move the minimum 40 feet required by code and a side setback of 6.7 feet, move the minimum 12 feet required by code. Also, grab an application and plans on file.
Okay, and who do we have speaking on 11 A O one?
Johns.
I'm sorry, could you repeat, sir?
John Steiner contractor.
Very good. Hey, John, can you just give us your name and your address, please?
Uh, John M. Steiner, 158 Gibson Street, Canada, New York, 14424.
Okay, sir, great. All right, so please proceed.
Um, well, basically what what my customers would like to do is just put a small mudroom addition off the back of their house with a small breezeway that would connect that structure to the garage. That way they could park their car in the garage and walk into the home into that mudroom without traveling outside. It's a small scale project. It's, I mean, the plans kind of lay it out. It's pretty simple. But obviously, we're asking for the variance because of the garage structure then violates with the setback because it's attached to the home at that point. We're not actually building any structures that are any closer to the property lines. You know, the customers are just trying to make another improvement on their home. They've done a lot of great work already and and hopefully that the neighborhood will be better for it. So we're just looking for your guys' guidance and permission.
Okay, very good. Board members, questions?
The existing garage structure is staying as is. It's a new garage structure isn't being built on the same foundation, right?
Exactly. Nothing about the garage is being modified at all. And the structure that's going to connect the garage to the house is going to be done in a style that's congruent with what's already there.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Other questions? Judy, anything?
No, I, um, I went over to look and it's just, I mean, the only reason is because they're filling in the space there. Otherwise, there's no change, really.
Okay, very good. All right, great. There's no other questions, then. Thank you very much, Mr. Steiner.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay, and at this point, I'd just like to ask if there's anybody on the call that would like to speak regarding this application. Okay, then, there being none, then the public hearing's closed.
Application 11 A O two twenty, application of the Country Club of Rochester, owner of property located at 2935 East Avenue for a variance from section seventy three dash twenty nine. Required in accordance with section seventy three dash thirty four to allow for the construction of a maintenance building without the installation of an automatic sprinkler system as required by code. Also, Scott, an application and plans on file.
Alrighty, so who do we have speaking for the Country Club of Rochester?
Uh, this is Andrew Spencer. Can you hear me?
Yes, Mr. Spencer, we can. We recognize that voice.
Excellent. I'm hoping that Bruce Dumbold and Rick Holthoff are also on the core call. Jeff, are they available as well, please?
Yeah, one second.
Thank you.
While we're waiting, Andrew, if you're the primary speaker, can just name an address for the record, please?
Yes, Andrew Spencer, 124 Woodgate Terrace, Rochester. I'm with BME Associates, acting as a agent for Country Club of Rochester.
Okay, very good.
And with with me this evening are Bruce Dumbold from HBT Architects, as well as Rick Holthoff, who is the golf course superintendent at the Country Club of Rochester.
Okay, so if if and when they would like to speak, then they can do the same as you just did. We'd appreciate that, okay? All right. Okay, so when you're ready, please proceed.
Yes, so thank you very much. Good evening, hope everybody is well. We are here this evening, as Mr. Stefano had described, we are looking for a variance from the fire sprinkler code ordinance within the Town of Brighton code. You know, per our understanding, the provision of that fire sprinkler systems code section is primarily for protection of property in addition to the protection of the health, safety and welfare of residents here in the town of Brighton. We have been before you before for other variances for the location of this maintenance structure, which is an eighty five hundred square foot building that will be going into the approximate same location as the existing maintenance facility. We have also had discussions with the Fire Marshal of the town, Mr. Chris Roth, regarding our application and how to proceed. We did provide you a letter of intent dated October thirteenth that outlines some of the criteria that we believe is viable for the zoning board of appeals to make a decision upon. I just want to go over a few items as it relates to the site that have been done. And then I would like to ask Mr. Bruce Dumbold from HBT Architects to follow up with some of the improvements that are being made in the building itself. From a site perspective, and Jeff, do you have a site plan that you might be able to show, please? Thank you. Thank you very much. So this is the positioning of the building on the site, running north to south. One of the things that we did during the site planning process is to look at vehicular circulation around the building. And we've actually increased the width of the drive lane on the north side of the building from what was ten feet to a sixteen foot width. We've also positioned the building far enough away from the Westerly property line approximately forty two feet to allow for emergency vehicles to have a three hundred and sixty degree access to the structure. There was not three hundred and sixty degree access previously. Secondly, there were two fuel tanks on the property, a gasoline fuel tank as well as a diesel tank. And they were located in two different locations on the property. And what we've done is provided them on the north side of the building within a containment zone, and they will have a fire suppression system around them. A fire suppression system is not required, but that will be incorporated within this design. Thirdly, there is a storage building on the north end, which would house all the chemicals and fertilizers that they use on the golf course, separate from the actual facility itself. The facility is going to house a, a shop area as well as a storage area for vehicles and golf carts that may be under repair, as well as an area for employees, maintenance employees of the facility. We did provide a, a architectural plan that kind of shows the breakup of the building into three different sections. Storage area on this plan is on the right hand side, the shop areas, the larger area. Thank you for highlighting that. And then the employee area with employee break room and and laundry service and bathroom services on the bottom of the page. We are looking for the variance because we believe that we have incorporated a number of things on the site that are basically per the intent of the fire sprinkler code. And we've also done quite a bit of research in the cost of the fire sprinkler system for the structure. One of the reasons we're looking for the variance is due to the cost as well as the disruption that might be caused on the site. The water service goes into the main clubhouse facility and is not in close location to the maintenance facility, which would require a whole new service line to be installed along the drive. There is a hydrant within a hundred and twenty feet of this structure to provide fire service and fire protection to the building. See? We've also included oh, actually, I'm sorry, I apologize for that pause. I think from a site plan perspective, we are providing ample service area to the building for fire emergency vehicles. As I stated, the, the water service is a main contributor, having to put in a whole new line, a potentially upgrading RPZ of the facility would would be in the order of eight to 10% of the overall cost of the structure that would be added to the cost. With that, I would ask Bruce Dumbold from HBT Architects to speak to some of the improvements and some of the things we're doing within the building that are above and beyond the fire code of New York State and uniform fire code. Bruce, might you just walk through, walk us through some of that, please?
Sure. My name is Bruce Dumbold. I'm with HBT Architects, 2 Elton Street, Rochester. With this building, just a little bit of code background, New York State building code background. They have regulations that that describe the type of construction you are allowed to use for a, a building and that it's based on the type of occupancy that is going to take place within the building, as well as the square footage. For this project, most, the majority of the square footage, which would include the storage area, the shop, the parts office, the grinding area, fall into the category of S one, and that's a moderate hazard occupancy that addresses storage and vehicle repairs. The, the office area break room would be classified as a type B occupancy, which is essentially a business or office occupancy. With those occupancies, the code would allow us to actually build a nine thousand square foot building, which is greater than what we have here. It would allow us to build this out of wood stud construction with vinyl siding or wood siding. And that type of construction is type five B for durability purposes and for, you know, hopefully a longer term life cycle for the building. And for fire safety, we are going to actually build this as a type two B structure. And that requires that the structural numbers and exterior materials and interior framing and materials all be of non combustible construction. The code would actually allow us to build a seventeen thousand square foot building using that type of construction, but you know, we certainly don't need that here. So really, we've upgraded the fire resistance characteristics of this building beyond what the building code of New York State would require. The occupancies within the building don't actually require a sprinkler system according to the New York State Building Code. However, if we, you can see running up and down on the page, what we've labeled as a three hour fire separation. What that does is it separates the two S one areas into a square footage, each being less than five thousand square feet. A group S one occupancy is not required to have a sprinkler system as long as the fire area for that S one occupancy is five thousand square feet or less. So that three hour rated wall is creating two separate fire areas, one on either side, both of which are less than five thousand square feet, thereby not requiring a sprinkler within that space, once again, according to the New York State Building Code. Fire sprinklers, according to the state building code, are not required in a group B occupancy unless there is more than five hundred occupants in the building, or if there are more than one hundred building, one hundred occupants on a floor either above or below the grade level of the building. We only have a one story building, so that's not an issue, and we certainly don't have anywhere near a hundred occupants in this structure. We also are adding a one hour separation. It's somewhat by default because of the non combustible construction we're using. That's labeled as a one hour rated partition between the, the business occupancy and the shop area. That one hour rating is achieved just because we're using metal studs with five eighths inch tight back spire rated drywall on both sides, and that, that does give you a one hour fire separation. We've also incorporated more exit doors out of the building than the code requires. I think those are spelled out in our application here. We have three exit doors, or three means of exit through the storage from the storage area, two going directly to the exterior and one, you could pass through the business area to get out on the left side. We have two ways out of the shop. One would go through the storage area, the one would, and the other would go directly to the north. Also, there's a, on the on the south or bottom side of the shop area, there's another door that could take you out and through the main entrance door. The windows that we provided in the office areas are of a size that would permit by New York State Building Code, a, an emergency means of egress that requires that there be five point seven, or excuse me, five point zero square feet of free area. And there's a minimum width of twenty inches, a minimum clear height of twenty four inches, and these windows do meet that. One thing we are going to add that you don't see here is we're going to add a, a door directly to the exterior from the break room. And what that will do is provide two means of egress, even though there's only one required by New York State Building Code that would give us two means of egress from the office break room area, one to the left and one to the bottom. So that that door would probably go right where you see column grid line number four, just to the left of that. We are providing a fire alarm system. Neither of these occupancies require that, but we do intend to provide one. That will be a manual fire alarm system, which would notify anyone in the building, you know, if there's a need to make an emergency means of egress. We will provide more than the NFPA ten, which is a National Fire Protection Association requirements for the number, the quantity of fire, portable fire extinguishers. We will locate those initially on our plans when we submit for a permit, but we always have a note on there that all those locations and the quantity need to be approved by the Fire Marshal before a permit is issued. So with those measures, you know, I think we've gone beyond what the building code of New York State requires in terms of fire resistance and life safety requirements. And looking at those to substitute for some of the requirement of the town required sprinkler system.
Okay.
Thanks. Thank you, Bruce. Appreciate that. Rick, did you have anything to add to our discussion prior to allowing the zoning board to ask some questions of us?
Uh, yes. I just, just a couple of quick comments. I want to point out again, thank you for hearing our application. This is Rick Holthoff. I'm the golf course superintendent at the Country Club of Rochester, 2935 East Avenue, Rochester, 14610. And again, thank you for hearing your application. And Andrew and Bruce, I appreciate your, your technical input on this one, and I'm just really going to have some less technical input that, um, you know, in my survey of Monroe County, this would be the only golf course maintenance facility that would, a sprinkler system would be installed or be required to be installed within a three mile radius of the Country Club of Rochester. Three new golf course maintenance facilities have been built in the last three years, none of which have required either required or did install a sprinkler system and or a, a, even a, an alarm system. And again, we would be the only maintenance facility in, in Monroe County in which we provide a fire suppression system for our unleaded fuel storage. And again, we also, this is not the case in the other facilities, provide for separate fertilizer pesticide storage, which would not be in this building. So I think that was just, for me, that was a little eye opening. You know, that we're, I think, putting forth a very reasonable request in front of this, in front of this board. And I think that's it. I'm, any questions? I am happy to chime in.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, do any of the board members, Jennifer? Okay, you got a couple of things there, Jen. She's trying to write them to us through her voice.
If it's helpful, I can go ahead and read them out loud. Does that make sense?
Sure.
Yeah, that'd be great.
One of them is, what activities are going to take place inside of the structure? Is there any kind of welding, for example, or machine work?
You want me to answer that one, Andrew?
Yes, please, if you don't mind. Thank you.
So in the area of the plan that's late, I believe, I can't see it's a little small on my screen, labeled the maintenance shop. There is equipment repair. There is a, a toolbox, you know, mechanic that works in there with a toolbox, and he does have a welder in that, in that area that's separated completely by, from, from the staff. So that, in that shop area, there is welding that takes place.
And then how many, how many people are likely to be in this building at one time? I think there's only three offices, but obviously a much larger break room and
Correct. Did, so let, let, in, we designed the building to hold a maximum of twenty four staff to come in for lunch or break or for a morning meeting. Obviously, it's a, it's a maintenance for a hundred and seventy acre property, so most often people are out of the building. But we did want to provide a building that allowed them an area for, for lunch and break and obviously gathering in the morning. So typically, there's only people in the building, but there are times when there would be current staff levels, the most at twenty, but we designed it to handle twenty.
And what are the there's chemicals being stored on the property? Can, do you know, you know, what types of materials are being stored?
Sure, there, there's a building. There's, there's a separate building that was, I believe, added in nineteen ninety five. That will be adjacent to this building that we, we run our inventory on a just in time delivery process. So we use fertilizers or weed controlled products or insect controlled products, plant protectants. They are stored in the pesticide storage building separately locked, and that building meets the, met the current codes at the time. And, and is not, none of that stuff is stored inside this building.
So what is going to be stored inside this building, then?
You know, in the, in that part storage area, there would be auto, you know, not auto, mower parts, you know, bearings, blades, things like that. That would really be, I think, the extent of it. I mean, some hoses, you know, for watering, you know, in general, equipment, repair parts. You know, we stock employee safety things, you know, gloves, uniforms, all sorts of things like that, but nothing really of a hazardous nature, anyway.
Okay.
And storage area, I'm sorry, in the storage area, that's all the golf carts and the utility vehicles that we drive around the golf course. So if that, if that's what you meant by the storage area, yeah. So that's like a small grounds maintenance equipment, golf carts, things of that nature.
Okay. Any of the, any of the large mowers or anything like that?
Uh, the, the, all the large, most of the large mowers are stored in a facility that we built years ago out on the eighth hole, a cold storage building. That's where the large equipment is, all the smaller equipment, but there are some mowers, the, the mowers that mow the greens and the tees. What I, what I consider the smaller mowers, maybe the size of a, a commercial, like when you see somebody mow their lawn, a commercial type lawnmower, most would be that size or smaller.
Okay, good. All right, now, I have a question for you. I don't know, maybe Andrew could answer this one, or you said you're going to put an alarm system in as, as part of the mitigation for the sprinkler. Is there a reason why, if you're going to put that system in, that you wouldn't monitor it?
Um, I mean, as an answer, there is a possibility we could do that, or are you suggesting maybe connecting it up with the town system?
Not necessarily the town system, Andrew, but you know, this is a remote location that you got a lot of expensive equipment in. And if, God forbid, something was to happen at night or whatever, given where it's located, it would seem to me that it would be reasonable and to, to have you know, the facility be monitored so that immediately if something happened in there, that, you know, it would be noted. I think for the kind of investment that the country club's putting in here, because as you know, they can be done remotely now. It's not like years ago, we had to run a phone line, you know, and there's so many new technologies to be able to do this type of monitoring now that makes it a lot simpler, but.
Yeah, I think, I think that's something that the, that we could have a discussion about to see what that monitoring software and or provisions to do that could be and see whether or not we could include that. I don't know, Rick, if you had anything to add to that?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's, that's, it's reasonable. You would want someone that, you know, some sort of central notification, so somebody, you know, yeah. I think that's a reasonable and
Yeah, I, I don't, and I don't think it's really an onerous expense and probably the panel that you would provide to do the other things that you're going to have in there would easily be able to handle that dialer, because that's really all you're really adding to it, so.
I would think we have, we haven't gotten in the level of detail, but there'll be some sort of, I would think, alarm system on the building and probably could be tied right into that somehow.
Okay, all right. I just wondered if there was some particular reason why you didn't do it. So that was really the extent of my question, and you know, we can, the board can discuss that later, but I just wanted to have your input on. Okay, do we have any other questions by the board?
Judy, on an average day, about how many people would you say work in the shop?
In that, in that shop area, two. In that, in that shop area, two.
Two?
One to two. We have an head mechanic and an assistant mechanic.
And how about the hours? Are they mostly, like, are there, there are, isn't anybody there working like a second shift overnight?
No, they're generally five in the morning till three in the afternoon. Golf starts early.
Okay.
In, in snow removal. I mean, in the winter, we, we have to be in early for snow removal.
Okay, so how about any other questions by the board members?
Yeah, did you guys um, consider doing like a, a dry sprinkler system for, you know, if, if there was a fire at the property for um, uh, emergency response?
I mean, in our initial um, walkthrough with, I don't have it with me, the ES sprinkler that gave us the, the quote. You know, the, one of the things that was complicated about this is, is they really cautioned us against the dry system. And, and again, it's not my, not my area of expertise, but the, uh, they cautioned us against a dry system due to its expense and its ongoing maintenance. Um, cost and w- one of the issues we talked about was that storage area was really planned to be not a heated area, so. The um, we would have to consider, they thought it would even be better if, to heat it. And avoid a dry system because of the maintenance and, and uh, ongoing issues that, that they present. But again, I'm not an expert in, in that. You know, I know we have the, that it is a dry system that, that is handled by our fuel tank. Um, and that is, requires a fair amount of maintenance and inspections.
And then give your main reason for not doing this is because of cost or any other reason?
Well, it's, 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 it's twofold. Um, yes, the cost of the system, as I, as I said, uh, earlier. Uh, increases the cost of the overall structure and the magnitude of eight to ten percent. Just for the sprinkler system within the structure itself. Uh, the secondary uh, cost that has not been completely analyzed, but. Uh, we know that the water service system coming into the main clubhouse. Would have to be redone to some extent, a new line being brought out to this building. The water main actually goes underneath a, a small portion of the pool area that was just put in a number of years ago. Um, and to upgrade that means to take away that pool area and then redo that. Uh, and it turns into uh, compounding issues upon compounding issues. We hope that the, the other improvements that we're making to the building internally as well as externally. Uh, do meet, you know, the intent of the, the fire code to provide as much safety for the structure and the property as possible. As they, as they did know, there, there is a hydrant uh, within a hundred and twenty feet of this structure to provide connectivity.
Good. All right, board members, any other questions?
And did, can you, do you mind pulling back up the site plan for this property? What are the closest other buildings, whether they're storage, whether they're um, any residential properties within, you know, close distances? I, I think it has the distance to the property boundary line.
Yeah, so to the, to the west of this structure. Um, the properties are approximately a hundred feet away and those are residential buildings. To the north, it's over a hundred feet uh, to the nearest residential structure. And the clubhouse itself is almost two hundred feet away from the structure.
Okay, and no issues with your insurance carrier? Um, you know, they're, they're perfectly satisfied with the, the plan that you have for fire protection?
Yes, that is correct.
Have you spoken with neighbors? Do they know about the fact that this is going up and, or have sprinklers in it?
Uh, I don't believe, we have not made direct contact with them in those regards, no.
And they're, they're obviously certainly aware of the building because we, we went through the, you know, the, the proper plan. I don't believe we got into a sprinkler discussion.
Rick, I actually just have a quick question for you. I, I did not see any kind of letter from uh, Mr. Roth. Uh, in the package, is that, or I just want to make sure I didn't miss it.
Uh, you missed it. It was, came over with the, the final agenda. Wasn't in the packet. Right. Today with the final agenda.
Came this afternoon.
Okay.
All right.
Got it. Okay, I'll, I'll look at that then.
Okay, other questions? All right, we'll wrap this up then. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Okay, and uh, so at this point, let me ask if there's anyone on the Zoom conference call that would like to speak regarding this application. Okay, if there's none, then we will close the public hearing.
Application eleven A O three twenty, application Bridget Carney, Edge Architecture. And Catherine Humphrey and Richard Chuesdale, owners of property located thirty-eight Whitestone Lane for an area variance in section two oh five dash two. To allow an addition and covered porch to extend twenty feet into the sixty foot rear setback required by code. All describing application plans on file.
All right, and who do we have speaking for Whitestone Lane?
Uh, this is Bridget Carney with Edge Architecture.
Okay, Bridget, welcome. So when you're ready, please proceed.
Thanks. Um, we are proposing a new addition to the rear of the existing home. And are requesting relief from the rear setback. Um, the required is sixty feet and we are requesting forty feet to accommodate the addition. Um, it's a first floor mudroom with a covered patio and a second floor bedroom and bathroom up above. Um, all the spaces are in keeping with single family home in the neighborhood. The addition is located at the rear of the home. Uh, it's minimally visible and the appearance will be similar to the existing home. Uh, so it should not be a detriment to the neighborhood or change the character of the neighborhood. Um, if we look at the plan, uh, could you go to the survey that we sent? Yeah, thank you. Um, you'll see that the property line creates sort of a trapezoidal oddly shaped lot. Um, and that the rear property line, which is at the bottom of the page, um, is not parallel with the rear walls of the house. Um, and if you could then go to the other plan for me. Thank you. Um, you'll see that that property, that rear setback line then is diagonal to the back of the house. And just touches kind of the corners of the existing building as it goes. Um, which doesn't really leave any practical functional space for this addition. Um, and you'll see that the south uh, side of the addition at the top. Uh, extends past that setback approximately or maximum of eight feet on the actual building portion. And then the patio extends an additional twelve feet, which takes us to the twenty foot request. Um, the two-story portion of the addition will not extend past the existing family room, which is the protrusion from the back of the house. That you see off to the left. Um, only the patio roof will. And the entire addition, including that patio roof, does not extend past the immediate neighbor's home to the right on the sheet. Um, so that's all I have. Uh, thank you for considering the request.
Okay, so questions by the board members? I just have one, just to start here, I guess. Bridget, did you look at any other alternatives that maybe would have mitigated some of the? Need for this variance, were there any other alternative designs or anything that were considered?
Um, yes, we did a couple of different floor plans. Most of them required um, a setback. Others did not meet the needs of the owner in terms of the functionality of the space.
Can you just talk to that functionality just a bit as to why that's the best location?
Sure, so um, the owner has um, dogs and they enjoy using their backyard. Um, but the existing home does not really have a good back door out to their, their yard. Um, so they were, wanted to achieve that with this addition. Um, in addition to having access from their driveway and the garage into the kitchen. Um, so this mudroom gives them all three things by being in the, this corner of the house. Um, it's the entry point. Um, they can let the dogs in and out. They can get from the kitchen to the outdoors. Um, and gives them the space for the, the laundry and the storage and the, the utility sink um, that they need in there.
Okay, very good. Okay, other questions by the board?
Can you clarify what you meant? I, I think that the uh, covered patio will not extend any further. Back than the uh, next door home?
Correct. So the neighbor's property, go ahead, sorry.
Oh, is it, is, is the neighbor's home equally um, you know, ha- have a, a, a violation of the setback as well? Pre-existing or otherwise?
I'm not aware if it's um, a violation or anything like that. I just, when you look at it um. From an aerial view, this addition would not go past if you drew like a line through the property from the edge of their home.
So are you saying that it wouldn't, it doesn't go any far? The distance between the at, back of the covered patio and the rear setback is not. Any more so than the neighbor next door?
Um. I'm not aware, I'm not aware of their setbacks, but in terms of their property being next door. Um, the end of their home is past where our covered patio would end.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
And immediately. Immediately behind the house, uh, or the home is a very heavy tree line? That accurate?
Yes, yes, there's a heavy tree line there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, good. All right, any other questions? Okay, Bridget, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, uh, is there anyone in the audience that would like, the audience, hopefully, all right? Anyone on the conference call that would like to speak regarding this application? Okay, there being none, public hearings closed.
Application eleven A O four twenty, application John Inzina and Jacqueline Whitney, owners of property located at three twenty-five Antlers Drive. For Mary and Mary in section two oh seven dash two A, allow front yard fence to be six point five feet in height, new with a maximum three point five feet along the code. All describing application plans on file.
Okay, who do we have speaking on this application?
Hi, this is John Inzina, one of the applicants.
Okay, very good, John. So just give us for the record your name and address and then you can proceed.
Yes, I'm John Inzina. My address is three two five Antlers Drive, the property in question.
If you could just try to bring your volume up just a bit or get closer, because we're having a little hard time here.
Is that better? All right.
Okay, go right ahead.
Uh, we are looking to uh, put a fence. On our property, our property is on the corner of Elmwood Avenue. And we're requesting uh, a variance to the uh, height restriction. Uh, which would be normally three and a half feet for the front of a property. We're requesting that to be six feet. And there are, there are essentially two mitigating factors uh, for this request. And the first is uh, that it would align with the adjacent property's six foot fence uh, property on the corner of. I believe that's Bonnie Bray and Elmwood Avenue. Uh, and we, we weren't going to go uh, any further. We're going to line up exactly with that fence. Uh, and the other is the, the setback distance on that is, is fifty-seven feet. Uh, so it's quite a distance away from the main road.
And you're speaking about Elmwood Avenue, right, correct?
Correct.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, the, as far as Antlers Drive, uh, we, we would be coming up to the back edge of the house, uh, no, no further than the back edge of the house. So I, I, I think the, I'm trying to get my orientation on the drawing there. Yeah, I think the, the drawing has it um, set up so that on the left-hand side, you would see where the, we, we're requesting the new fence be. Uh, along Elmwood Avenue. And that extends uh, twenty-five feet past the edge of the house that is along Elmwood Avenue. But as I say, fifty-seven feet back from the road or back from the property line.
All right, can you just, for the record, just explain what the need for this fence is?
Uh, it's for uh, both privacy and for volume noise, for noise. Um, and we have a situation where we bought the house five years ago and there were a. Pretty large number of trees on Elmwood Avenue. Uh, and about a year ago, either our G and E or the town or the county came in and took out a large number of trees. Uh, and, and as a result, we've had uh, we've, we've lost some of the noise suppression that those trees offered and some of the privacy. And so we'd like to, to get that back.
Okay. All right, is there anything else you would like to add, sir?
I believe that's it. Uh, any questions anyone has?
I think just for the record, uh, John, could you kind of describe the style of the fence that you're proposing?
Uh, the style of fence would be a, a wood fence, vertical slats. I, I believe there was an image in the application. Of what the, there's, there you go. So there, there's the fence style.
Here.
And just for clarification, um, when I advertise this, I did advertise it at six and a half feet and I just want to verify with John. Um, that six foot that is showing on there, that's to the panel height, correct? And then the, the.
I believe that's the panel height, yes.
Right, then the post height would be six and a half feet, correct?
I.
It can't exceed that six and a half feet, but.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Yeah, it, it would not exceed six and a half feet, certainly.
Great.
Okay, and John, also, would you comment on how this fence will look along with the fence that's, it would be adjacent to?
We're trying to match uh, both being a wood fence um, and, and similar finish, trying to, trying to provide somewhat of a consistent.
Okay, no, that's ver- that's very good. Uh, and will you be doing any kind of landscaping improvements along with that or have you considered that or?
Yes, we, we'll be doing some landscaping improvements, both on the, the part of the yard that is. Uh, on the other side of the fence from the property, the, the part visible from Elmwood Avenue and, and also be doing some landscaping inside the, the new fenced in yard.
Could you just broadly describe what you're thinking of doing?
Um, well, one of the things that we have noticed uh, over the life of the property is that the, the edge. Next to the sidewalk has been worn away, has been eroded, and so we're going to build that up as a berm. Um, so that it uh, can support the, the grass and the trees a little bit better. Uh, and not get worn away. And so, and also so that water doesn't collect on the sidewalk. We, we know that some of the areas. Um, a- as the side grasses get worn away, the water sits on the sidewalk and then it freezes in the wintertime and increase hazardous conditions. So we're, we're, we're trying to build that up to avoid those kinds of situations.
Would there be anything added as any mitigation for the fence, like uh, near the fence on the Elmwood side?
Oh, yes, yes. Um, we, we haven't picked out uh, landscaping i- in terms of the exact plants, but there, there would be plants on the other side of the fence, yes.
Okay, so on the, on the Elmwood facing side?
Visible from Elmwood, that's right.
Okay, okay, that's fine. Okay, other questions for the, Mr. Inzina?
I think you've mentioned this, but just to confirm, the intention is to be consistent both in height. And in appearance with the neighboring property fence, which already runs along that same portion of, uh, is Elmwood Avenue?
Yes.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, other questions? Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right, is there anyone in the, the conference call that would like to speak regarding this application? Okay, there being none, then the public hearings closed.
That's it, now, public hearings.
I'm, I'm sorry, I did, I closed it.
Yeah, that's it with the public hearings.
Okay, very good.
So we want to move into decisions?
I can't hear you, Rick. You got to speak up.
We want, you want to move into decisions now?
Handle this and finish this and then we'll move to the uh, old business.
Yeah, I think we should finish up with the, the new business items.
Yeah, that's fine. That's absolutely fine. Okay, all right, so board members, then what we'll do is we'll start with. Uh, application eleven A O one, which is the detached garage. Any concerns there?
You're not even going to know. I mean, it's not going to show from the street or anything. It's basically not really changing footprint or anything. It's, you know.
Right, I, I saw it also, yeah.
Yeah.
Any concerns then? All right, Judy, go ahead, Judy.
Okay, I move that we approve application um. Eleven A O one twenty. eleven A oh one twenty, based on the following findings of fact. One, the existing detached garage is five point seven feet from the rear setback in lieu of the required minimum of forty feet. The side setback is six point seven feet in lieu of the minimum twelve feet as required by code. Two, the reason for this variance is because the applicant wishes to attach the existing garage to the principal structure to create a mudroom and laundry area. There is no other area that offers the applicant this needed space, and it does not change the footprint of the principal structure. Three, there will be no appreciable change to the home as a result of this variance, and it will not be visible from the street. It is merely an attachment of the existing garage to the principal structure, the house. Anything else? Conditions, one, this variance only applies to the attachment of the existing detached garage to the principal structure, the house, as presented in testimony and the written application. Two, all planning board and building department approvals must be obtained.
Can we just say unnecessary building permits shall be obtained?
Say that again?
All necessary building permits shall be obtained.
Yes.
I can't remember right.
Motion is to approve with conditions, Ms. Dale. Ms. Dale?
Sorry, yes, I couldn't find my mute button.
Mr. Mites?
Yes.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Ms. Schwartz?
Yes.
Ms. Tompkins, right?
Yes.
Motion to approve with conditions carries.
Okay, very good. All right, so the next one is the Country Club of Rochester situation, the maintenance building and the sprinkler system, so. Thoughts there?
Guys, get a chance to read Chris's uh, Fire Marshal's letter.
He feels we, it should be that required.
He does?
Yeah.
He does, yes.
Yes, right. My feeling is it's new construction. Yes, there's a cost, but there's a reason for it. So I um, I have a problem with the, with the variance.
Hey. Andrea, your thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think we need to weigh that against what that means, particularly if the current water lines can't support a sprinkler system in that building line, in building, and that, you know, the, what they're suggesting is that they have to, uh, you know, essentially disrupt and, and dig up a portion of the pool, you know, change the water as it comes out of the clubhouse. That's a really large-scale project that doesn't affect just this one building. I didn't hear alternatives to that kind of cost, particularly its destruction of other buildings, so. I, I appreciate and respect, you know, Chris Roth as our fire marshal and the Brighton's sprinkler law. I just think that this type of a storage facility with this many exits and the additional uh, fire suppression equipment they're putting in as well as uh, the construction may warrant a variance from that.
Yeah, the extra, you know, the extra door to the outside from the break room, I thought was good. I, yeah, I'm, I'm torn just because there's, it's, it, it seems like they're really putting forth a considerable effort to find alternate means, you know, to, to cover for the safety concern.
I'm not sure I totally understood what alternatives there might be to the water line. I don't know that I'm an expert in dry sprinkler systems, but I'm not sure I got a full answer on whether that was really fully explored.
They are, Jennifer, a little bit more difficult to handle. They're a little more onerous, especially when you don't have a heated structure. But again, as you can imagine, the, if you were to install a wet system as well in, in this building, then, you know, it can't be unheated either. So it's obviously that, that's not going to work. So, you know, I, again, I, they did not really provide backup, I guess, in a sense for what these real costs are. They certainly described, as Andrew points out, the issue with bringing a larger water surface. I'm sure the water surface that's into that other building just is not big enough to support a sprinkler system. So that's probably why another additional service, or whether it's a one inch or two inch or whatever it needs, has to be added. But I think the difficulty I know for me, and then we can go through with anyone else, is just that, you know, if we're trying to compare, well, what's onerous, I, I think Andrew suggested that it was eight to ten percent of the value of the building. But um, you know, quantifying that as it relates to the whole project budget, I guess we under, we could understand in generalities what eight percent means, but, you know, uh, having a little more data might have been helpful with this.
Can I just um, also say something? Um, and I don't know if this would come into play or not, but when we granted a variance to this building um, back in March, where normally it would have to be a hundred and fifty feet away from a property line. We granted it a variance at fifty feet and forty feet or something like that on the, and the one back on the side. If this had come to you knowing that they weren't going to sprinkle it or didn't want to sprinkle it, would you have thought differently regarding that setback requirement?
Probably so. Yeah, for safety reasons, definitely.
Okay. All right, so Kathleen, do you have some thoughts there?
I think, well, my thoughts are, are really very split because I, I truly appreciate the extra work that they did to try to comply with the New York State regulations. I like the fact that they've tried to separate kind of the employee section from the other section to create these two, I think they called them five thousand square feet buildings. But not being an expert on sprinklers, I tend to default to the fire marshal, and if he is uncomfortable with it and not recommending it, I'm going to, to go with his recommendation that you know, a sprinkler is needed. And if I had some more information that it wasn't just cost, perhaps I could be persuaded, but right now what I'm really hearing is cost. Um, and in the past, this board has turned down applications where at least one restaurant wanted to do it and said it costs too much money. And we said, when it's the safety of people involved, you still need to do it. So right now, I'm, I hate to say it, but I'm leaning towards no.
Okay, all right, and Ms. Dale?
Yeah, I could, I could go either way. I, I, I feel the same way about going against what the fire marshal recommends. I just, I just feel like they did a, a pretty good job explaining all of the various changes that they were prepared to make and their compliance and, I don't know, I, especially, you know, Dennis, when you were bringing up sort of the monitoring and they were willing to you know, potentially do that, I was thinking, well, we could add that, you know, we could have that added as a condition.
Sure, oh, absolutely, it could be, sure.
I, I don't know, I, I'm, I'm, I guess I'm, I'm a little surprised that with all the changes that they were making and the small number of people who are going to be there and the hours that they're there, and I, I'm a little surprised that the fire marshal had a problem with it.
My, my guess is, and I don't want to speak for Chris because I, I did not personally discuss this with him.
Yeah.
But I think the issue here is what kind of uses are going on in this building and the fact that for a lot of hours of the day or evening or whatever, it's an unattended building. And, you know, if somebody, as you know, just forgets to do something or that forgets, just like at home, if we forget to turn out the coffee pot or something, you know, things can happen, right? So I, I'm guessing that's what his concern is, or if the guy was welding during the day, or somebody was repairing one of these machines, you know, or grinding or whatever, and some sparks, you know, started, you know, could, could this thing be quickly put up? Especially if there's vehicles stored in here that have gasoline in them and things like that, so that would be my, my guess of what his concerns would be.
That's, that's sort of my take on it too, is that, you know, a few years ago, we passed one that was just a passive storage facility.
At first, no
Yeah, this is not that, and there's welding happening, there are people coming and going. There's um, pesticides and fuels being stored right nearby. I think it, the risk is up a little bit more than the previous one that we had approved. I'm split as well, but I would have to defer to the fire marshal.
Okay, so I, I guess let's kind of pull ourselves here then. Judy, what is your feeling then, after hearing all this?
I would deny.
Okay, okay, and Kathy?
Unfortunately, I mine is a denial at this point.
Okay, and Andrea, Andrea?
I, I just had one quick question, which is just for the board itself. Because one of the comments was that they really didn't provide a lot of detail about the hardship. If, if they did, is there a number or, you know, a more detailed explanation of the hardship that would change? Or is the safety concern great enough that it, that there isn't a hardship great enough that would change that? Because that would be my only thought, is that I'd also be willing to table it if we wanted them to give an opportunity to, to explain the chip in more detail, including a cost analysis of, of what it, um, you know, what a fully sprinkler, you know, and the water lines would do to the project. But if it doesn't change, if, if we still believe that the safety concern is great enough, then I don't want to waste anyone's time.
Right, well, yeah, I, I don't want to put them on a parade either, right? So I, I guess let's, let's, so where do you stand on this thing there? What's your preference then, Andrea?
I, I could see approving it if I had more detail as to the, the magnitude of the hardship.
Okay, so the cost might swing your thought, okay. All right, how about you, Judy? Would the cost information make any difference to you? Judy?
Me?
Yes.
No, it would not make any
Okay, and Kath?
It would, I, the, perhaps tabling for a different reason may be helpful. It sounds like the Country Club has been working with the fire marshal to try to comply with what they could, and maybe some additional discussions may lead to a solution that we weren't able to come up with tonight.
I guess that's remotely possible, but there are only so many solutions for this. I mean, because I think, you know, Andrea's point is correct, it's, if this is a risk issue, and it's a question of, well, how do you mitigate risk? And, you know, that's what these systems are for. And so there aren't a lot of other technological things that one could do. I mean, they certainly have made some effort, no question, you know, to come closer at least to the New York State Building Code. So
What I wish, and I probably just didn't articulate it clearly, what I'm saying is if the board wants to table it for a month to give them that opportunity to either supplement or to talk to the fire marshal to get, try to get a resolve, I don't have a problem with it.
Okay.
Thing, the point though that Rick brought up was the variance in the beginning and the residences aren't close by. And when I asked if they had spoken with them about this, Andy said, no, just when they, you know, they got their building permit to put it up. But to me, that's a, that's a big concern too. I mean, they're not that far away, when you think about it.
One thing I'd like, I'd like to add
Go ahead, Rick.
One thing, one thing I'd like to add that um, possibly with some of the stuff that was discussed tonight, the, the doorway out of the break room and automatic alarm system, I don't know if those things were discussed with the fire marshal. I don't know if those things just came out of tonight's meeting. Some additional fire safety um, construction efforts might help the fire marshal to get more on board with this too. I don't know.
Okay, well, that's certainly a possibility because we're, we can't speak for
He, I, I think you're, I think you're right, Rick, that like the door out of the break room was not in the plan. You know, the door to, to the exterior right outside. I don't believe that was in the plan submitted, so.
No, it wasn't.
Um, you, if, if, if that wasn't in the materials that we got, that very well may be a, a, a new item that the fire marshal hadn't, isn't aware of.
Right, well, I think, let's, let's try to wrap this and, and suggest, I mean, again, to certainly to table it for them to give more financial information on the costs and also to encourage some updated discussion, because again, I, I don't think they considered the monitoring based on the way they answered my question, so I think that's probably a new thing also. And um, you know, that certainly might, you know, give Chris some different level of comfort. I, I, again, we can't speak for him, but you know, if, as long as we're giving them some tangible direction here, which is what we try to do when we're tabling something, then if the rest of you would support that, then it would seem like it could make sense to give them one more opportunity, I guess.
The only other thing in concern of mine is that none of this is really um, adding to the safety of the neighbors. I mean, it's for the structure and the people who are working in there, but we really haven't given any consideration as to how this, and it can't, in my opinion, you know, safeguard the neighbors.
Well, I'm not sure about that, Judy, because again, if you look at the, at whatever mitigations that they might be able to come up with, not the cost, but the mitigations that Chris Roth could review and maybe have some opinion about would really do that, and whether they do it enough to make us feel comfortable or not is another story, but I, I don't think it's fair to say that they wouldn't improve it because they probably would, because they'd be more than what they're opposing now, okay?
I would suggest too that having a fire alarm automatically connected and, and calling the fire department, you know, uh, when there's a fire on the property is protection for the neighbors as well, because it gets yeah.
Yeah, because I think the big issue here is this is a, you know, probably if you look at the total amount of hours of, you know, seven days a week, the, the, a great amount of this time is going to be an unattended building. So I think, you know, that's part of the reason when you have something unattended, that there's some way to monitor it, because obviously people aren't going in and out of it all the time, okay? All right, so do, do, do we have support to table this? Is there anyone who thinks that's not a good idea?
I'm not thrilled. I, I mean, I, I would deny it.
Okay, how about anyone else? Anyone else object to table?
I do think it would be helpful to have a, a quantification of the hardship.
Okay, and I, I, I do agree also, Jen. Jen, would you, are you okay to do a table motion for this?
I think so.
Help you if you're needed. It should, can be pretty simple, because I think we know what the two issues are that we'd like to hear, so.
Okay.
Jen, if you want, I can do it too.
Thank you, Andrea, yeah.
Okay, go ahead, Andrea, that'd be great.
Um, so I move to table application number eleven A dash oh two dash twenty to provide the applicant with an opportunity to consider additional mitigation efforts and discuss with the town fire marshal and to present a more detailed expla, explanation and quantification of the hardship in installing a sprinkler system at the property.
Second.
Um, just before we um, make a motion or, or call a roll, uh, do we want to reopen that public hearing, Dennis?
Uh, I don't think there's a problem with reopening it, no.
Okay, so the, the motion is to table and keep the public hearing open. And I had a second from, I'm sorry?
Jen.
And, thank you. Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Mites?
That, yes.
Ms. Dale?
Yes.
Ms. Schwartz?
No.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Tompkins, right?
Yes.
Motion to table, keeping the public hearing open, carries. Motion to table, keeping the public hearing open carries.
Okay, sounds good. So hang on to your packet on that, and then we'll see what else the gentleman can add. All right, when you're ready, Rick.
Uh, number LA eleven A oh three, go ahead.
Very good. All right, so this is Whitestone Lane with the mudroom addition and thoughts here. Anyone have any concerns about this?
I think it's fine.
And I looked at it as well. I think it's fine. Andrea, you look like you're gonna say something.
I'm okay with it, but I don't like the kind of reliance on this being such a oddly shaped parcel. It's kind of shaped the way every parcel on a, you know, roundabout or or whatever these are called. Cold sack is shaped. I I it felt like a stretch of an argument. But I I do like the fact that it, and I I confirmed it on Google Earth, it it does look like it won't extend any farther than the neighboring property won't see it.
I think that's true.
I just didn't love that argument.
Okay, well, you had to give her a chance. She wasn't an attorney, so you know what I mean?
Well, 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 part of that, too, is I'd rather you not put irregularly shaped parcel in the approval, because that doesn't seem accurate to me.
Well, you can negotiate that with Ms. Dale.
Maybe mildly, maybe mildly irregular shaped or something, really down.
How about irregularly irregular? That's a medical term, okay? All right, so does anyone else have any mild objections to this? All right, go right ahead, Ms. Dale.
All right, well, I had used the word abnormal, so I have to think about about how to change that a little bit. Okay, a motion to approve application eleven A oh three dash two zero, based on the following findings of fact. Number one, the property owner desires to add a first floor mudroom with covered patio and second floor bedroom and bath that would extend past the rear setback at eight feet at minimum and twelve feet at max. Number two, the lot has a rear setback which runs along the rear of the house at an angle. And there is no practical functional location for an addition without a variance. The requested rear setback variance is the minimum necessary to allow the property owner to improve the functionality and enjoyment of their home. Number three, after the addition, the livable floor area of the house will still be below the maximum allowed. And the variance request will not result in a substantial change to the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to nearby properties. The addition will be partially hidden by the house and so will be minimally visible by, visible from the street. Number four, the proposed variance is consistent with surrounding properties and would not have an adverse of impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood.
I mean, can I just suggest something in regards to that? A large portion of the requested variance is a covered unenclosed porch that will have minimal impacts.
Okay.
Some, something words in that effect?
Yeah.
Okay, no, I like it. So that would be number five. So it would be, you said, a large portion of the requested variance is for a covered porch or is for a single story covered porch.
I would say, I would say unenclosed covered porch, and then we might want to condition that that covered porch remains unenclosed.
Okay.
Patio, too.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yeah, covered patio, not covered porch, I'm sorry.
Oh, thank you. Okay, so a large portion of the requested variance is for an unenclosed covered patio.
Which which will have, which will have less of a impact on neighboring properties.
Okay, thank you.
All right, how about your conditions then?
All right, well, so I guess one one condition quickly then would be the the proposed unenclosed covered patio shall remain.
Let's just do it with the the typical that the the variant applies only to the plan.
Just in order, you're talking.
Yeah, but I then.
Oh, like with no changes?
Just hear me out on this one. The the variant applies only to the addition as per plans submitted and testimony given. And and as shown on plans, that's that's a, shown on plans submitted and testimony given. In particularly, in particular, the covered porch shall be unenclosed. Thank you, Judy.
Yeah, because that's even less of an impact in a porch, really.
Right.
Sure, sure. No, Rick, thank you for your help.
What else do you have on conditions?
I I didn't, I was relying on Rick's help for a condition.
Okay, well, all right, so then then that's just that number two, unnecessary building permit shall be obtained.
Okay, very good.
Second.
Okay.
Judy.
Okay.
The motion is to approve with, excuse me, approve with conditions. Ms. Tompkins, right?
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Mites?
Yes.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt?
Yes, oh, I thought you said Schwartz.
Ms. Schwartz?
Yes.
And Ms. Dale?
Yes.
Motion to approve with conditions carries.
Okay, very good. Okay, so we're moving over to antlers and Elmwood with the fats. Any concerns here?
No, but I do think we should really make sure that there's a fact regarding it being the same height and the same architectural side is style as the neighboring property, which also has a fence line along Elmwood Avenue.
I think I got that covered.
Okay.
Do you want to condition it that's the same height? Mean if they decided that they were gonna go a little lower or?
I don't think they're putting the opening on theirs. I think it's stopping below that, isn't it? And and they just have the posts that will be a little bit high, but I I didn't think the top all the way across was going to be quite as high as the neighbor. I could be wrong, but when I stopped, that's what she said, I thought.
Well, I think the profile of it would probably look the same, but actually, Rick, I think maintain, personally, I think maintain the height makes more sense. I think having it lower would make it look worse, personally.
Well, I I understand that, but I we have to go by the the variance that was requested and it ends up being a little higher ne- next to it. I that was not what was requested or advertised as.
Okay, but I think you said that you advertised six and a half and they said six.
Right, I don't know how big that that fence is. Well, I went by the posts. I was going by the posts.
Yeah, with the top, the top of those posts, yeah.
Right, I don't know how tall that fence is next to it.
Well, obviously, we can't negotiate it, so I think, you know, we can either suggest we have to do it one way or the other, because there's only two choices. These are, this is the maximum height and live with it if it's a little lower. I mean, I I think that's really the only way you can do it, I think.
Right, right.
And wouldn't it just be really inches? I mean, we're not talking a foot or. It's gonna be minimal, so it may not even be, you know, that noticeable.
Okay, are are we all set?
Yeah.
Okay, let me give it a whirl. I move the approve application eleven A oh four twenty, based on the following findings of fact. One, the proposed fence will be approximately fifty seven feet from Elmwood Avenue, which will mitigate the fences or the, excuse me, what the fences, will mitigate the additional height. Two, the proposed fence will be a wood material which will match the neighbor's fence in style and height. Three, no except unacceptable change to the character of the neighborhood would likely result from the approval of this variance, since similar fencing is used on the adjacent property. Okay, uh, conditions that this fence or this fence, this variance is based on the testimony given and plan submitted specifically for the style and location of this fence and the maximum height of six feet.
I just have a comment, though. Are we locking them into the style? I think it's going to match certainly in material, but I don't know.
Not the style of the neighbor's fence, style that they just showed us in the.
That's what you're referring to, Dennis.
Referring to what the testimony and.
Okay, I just want to be clear on that, okay?
And and Dennis, could you just say six point five, not?
Yes, yeah, yeah, maximum height of six point five.
Thank you.
All right, two. All, what do you need? Building permits? That's it?
All that, all necessary building permits shall be obtained.
Okay, and then I don't, I don't know if we want to add something that say attempts to mitigate the fence with landscaping. I mean, we can't. They didn't really come up with anything specific, so I I'm not sure what it really means. Clearly, you heard in the testimony, he said they was gonna do something, but I don't really feel that concerned about it, but I don't know about the rest of you.
Yeah, I have a feeling they would do it regardless of whether we.
Yeah, because we just can't really condition it on anything. One, one bush would not be mitigation, you know. Okay, all right, so I guess I've done then.
Second, or was there a second already?
Oh, you got it.
Okay.
Motion is to approve with conditions. Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Dale?
Yes.
Tompkins, right?
Yes.
Ms. Schwartz?
Yes.
Mr. Mites?
Yes.
Motion to approve with, approve with conditions carries.
Okay, all right, so we're we're down to getting to the old business. Does anyone need like a five minute break here before we start?
Could we?
Yes, we could.
Okay, thank you.
Well, let's try to keep it to around five minutes so we can move along, okay?
Yes, sir.
It's eight twenty eight.
Dennis, it was sad to hear them say that when they lost the trees, it increased the noise from
Oh.
Elmwood, that's too bad.
Oh, I'm sure it did.
I'm sure, too, yeah.
Yeah, it's four lanes of road there.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was unfortunate.
Very. And then, of course, what they did on Witten Road, too, from twelve corners down to Verena.
Yeah.
Did you notice? I mean, everything.
Yeah, there's quite a bit that was lost there, too.
Yeah. And I think they just do it, don't they? I don't think they need to consult with the town.
Within their right of ways or things, I guess.
Sure, sure.
Stuart DiStefano?
Yes.
Is Mr. Dollinger present? Yeah, I haven't heard, haven't seen his smiling face or heard anything from him, so.
No, I'm here.
Well, that's nice. That maybe woke you up or something, you know.
No, it's getting a little cold in the building after like a certain period of time.
Oh, really?
I'm at the office, so it gets kind of.
Maybe you should turn the heat on, you know, I I understand you're trying to control expenses, but you know. It'll be awful warm these next five or six days.
Yeah.
I'm doing a little building addition down at the lake, and so the guys are having a ball over there. They had fishing poles out today and. All right, is everyone back? Judy, Andrea? Jennifer, are you there somewhere?
Yep.
Okay, all right, and Janie's back? See, Andrew? All right. Okay, so, so we have two pieces of old business. We have application nine A oh four twenty requesting, you know, an appeal. And then we, so I guess we'll, we can certainly start with that one, and then we can move to the second one. Rick, I I don't know if you have any feelings about, I mean, they they're certainly very similar applications. How do you feel about discussing them? Should they be discussed independently? I don't know, or?
No, I don't think so. There's, there's enough commonality between those two applications that I think we can discuss them as one. If and when we make motions, I think that's when we would split them out. So there might be a little bit of nuance between the two of them, but I think for discussion purposes, we'll just handle it as, you know, one application at this point. David, do you agree with that?
Yeah, that is, yes, I I totally agree. I think there's a significant, you know, five or six of the issues are almost the same in each of the applications.
Do you want to kind of start this off with the board?
Who, are you saying to me or?
Yeah, David, why don't you go ahead?
Yeah, I I I think that the the proposed resolutions and findings of fact supporting those resolutions were forwarded out to you guys, you know, said, you know, today, at very, today sometime. And it sets out, um, it's a lot, but you know, in the context of where the board is with respect to this particular application, there are a lot of allegations of fact. And as a consequence, there's a requirement to, which is unusual in our applications. We usually have three or four basic facts, you know. This, this one has a lot of factual allegations that need to be responded to by the town. And and that's, that's essentially what's in this document is. And, and that's, that's essentially what's in this document is an analysis of the. The arguments and the factual assertions. By the proponents of the, of the. Of the application, and this is the town's response factually and. And also, not only factually, but also with respect to our conclusions, proposed conclusions. Regarding the application. I'm, I'm willing to hear anyone's comments on it. I'm willing to hear anyone's comments that portions of it are not correctly decided. I'm willing to hear what anybody has to say, but at this point, this is a proposal for an affirmative. You know, denying the, the application, so. Do you have anything to add to that, Dennis?
Just quickly, I mean, again, you know, we, that, that's a fine way to look at it, you know, however, if, you know, people would like to. Discuss each one of the individual ones and say, yes, we're all in agreement or whatever, that's fine, too, but.
Well, I'm a hundred percent. I know, Dennis, I'm not trying to.
No, no, I, I understand.
I'm trying to give a little overview of what.
Yeah, well, we could, we could talk about number three or number seven or number five. All about them. So Andrea, what, what's your thought? Go ahead.
I would say that I think a, a lot of these things are, have either been withdrawn or. Not really based on because the facts probably don't support any kind of argument, and the two main arguments that I think we should discuss as a board. Are the cross-access easement issue. And the phased construction issue. For me, those are the two ones that I think are. That deserve a more in-depth discussion, and then say, for instance, the letter of credit issue, which, you know, both sides have sort of shown that they've. Or, or the towns, that they've gotten the letters of credit, and it looks like, you know, the. Yeah, approvals for, you know, I should say, the other issue that I think. Was maybe a little nuanced and, and should be discussed is the certification of the site plan. But a lot of these other ones, I don't think we need to spend a ton of time on because they've either been withdrawn, or there really isn't a factual basis based on.
Actually, I would just throw this out there, and you can, I, I think the billing certification, the cross-access easements. State and local county approvals, the construction sequencing and the pedestrian easements. Appear to me to be the five truly common arguments that are in, in, in the. In the applicant's papers, and then I think BGR has a little bit more on the trail amenity and some of the. Some of the zoning argument regarding the setbacks, but, but those are particular to them. But it seems to me that those are the five common. You know. That the, go on, Dennis, what's that?
Yeah, I, I guess, though, that, you know, Andrea's just proposed something here, which, you know, I, I don't disagree that those are probably the two most. You know, inter, interesting is the right word, the ones to discuss, but, you know, do, do the rest of the board members feel that they want to discuss other ones? Or are they comfortable after reading these assertions that, you know, that the, a lot of these other things are really matters of fact and. Really don't require discussion, because I, I don't disagree with David that there's other things to be discussed, but, you know, there, there's a lot of. You know, factual things that have been discussed in here, so.
Right, I agree with what David prepared about the certification and. The state county permits, and then, as we've said, the cross easements, to me, those are the major ones, and I pretty much concur with, with Andrea.
Why don't we just then, at this, this point, just kind of start going through one of the resolutions? And just hit those main topics, and if we feel that that's good, we'll just move on to the next one.
That's fine, because that's in deference to time, let's get it moving here. So I, I think we're pretty much all agreed that the revocable letters of credit is, is an issue that's. Been resolved, so why don't we talk about the cross easements? Andrea, did you want to, like, open that discussion a little?
Uh, sure, I, I would say that I was probably pretty vocal at the hearing. On this one. And, and here, here's how I would explain it. The town's job is to make sure that the cross-access easement submitted. On their face, do what they're supposed to, so the town should look at, are they placed in the right location? Do they actually, are they, are they, you know, purported to be signed by the owner of the property, giving those rights away? You know, even in, in, in one of the exhibits that one of the applicants. Were emails going back and forth with the town's attorney and the attorney for the applicant. Where they said, you know, hey, I'm a little concerned about the maintenance obligations in these easements. I would see that that town's role. I really believe that. Any kind of review passed that document on its face is wholly outside the scope of what the town is supposed to do to confirm those easements. To suggest that they read every word of every mortgage or any recorded document to see if there are some restrictions. Private restrictions on a party to be able to contract for that. I, I think outside of the scope of what the, any town should be ever required to do. I also would suggest that this restriction, they didn't sell right to put a mortgage on or to put an easement on the property. They agreed not to, which means that they probably did default on their mortgage by giving this easement, but doesn't mean that the easement. Is meaningless, vis a vis the property owner, that easement is still valid, recorded. Anyone who tries to buy this property in the future will have a copy of that easement provided to them. As if it affects the property, every survey, until it's foreclosed upon and that easement is terminated. Every survey will show that easement and its location on it. I, I don't know what the word valid means in, in, when it comes to an easement, but I. Suggest that that's what it means, and it, it is in fact valid, so that, that would be my thinking on that matter.
Okay. Yeah, a, and again, the other part of it is when you start reaching into what, what other. Issues related to the underlying mortgages and things are, and what somebody could assert related to these reasons, I don't think that's the town's responsibility either. Okay, so David, do you have anything to add to this one?
Oh, I, I would really second that emotion, and, yeah, I mean, you're going to be able to drive over this easement. It, it's whether there's a mortgage there or not, it's, it's an easement, so that, that's all I would say.
Okay, all right, does any of the other board members have concerns about this one?
Oh, so let me ask you, and I, and I know, Andrea, you, you probably want to do this pretty good. Are you happy with the way it's written? In this resolution? This portion of the easements.
Yeah, I mean, I suggested I have some language changes, and part of this because if I'm making a motion, I'm not going to quote myself. I would love to quote myself, I feel like that it would really play into my ego. But that's probably not an appropriate thing, so that, that was, I kind of. Went through and fussed a little bit with the language, but the sentiment is dead on. But I also want to talk about like, a kind of a more global issue, which is, you know, they're citing of legal cases in here. And references to specific exhibits in the record that is beyond the scope of what we've have done before. So I kind of want to talk about how we want to accomplish that. Just as this would be a significantly more complicated, more voluminous, look more like a legal document than what our. Approvals traditionally look like.
Yeah, I, yeah, I don't disagree with that, but again, I go back to the fact that. It's a unique case. I mean, we have not seen an application where the, you know, it's probably what? Almost a foot tall of allegations with six separate filings and. I, I think that the responses is appropriate to the, I, I think the detailed response is appropriate to what we're dealing with. In the context of, of what's been presented to us, and I do, I agree with you, I get it, I get that it's different, but I think this situation is different. It's a different, I mean, clearly, it's different than any other application we've almost ever seen, where pages, pages of, of. Unfortunately, really a lot of factual allegations, too, that need to be at least, you know, talked upon.
But like, here's an example, was, this is something that I struck out for if, if I'm going to be, you know, attempting an approval. The burden of proof issue that, that the applicant has to hold the burden of proof. I would say, and then we're, we found that they haven't met its burden of proof, based on, you know, a, a second department case. I would say that that, I wouldn't put that in this approval. I think that that would go in. The, if, if we do approve this, or as we talk about each issue to see, because maybe board members feel differently on, on other issues, too. Which would obviously change our opinion, but that's something that I would choose to leave out and. Instead have the burden of proof jurisdiction, those kinds of issues be done by the attorneys defending.
Yeah, no, I, I really don't agree with that at all, though, Andrea, actually, that, that part of it, I, I really would. I, I think that's an essential finding, because really, ultimately, that's what, the, the result here is. That you have a burden of proof and you haven't met it. Remember, we're like a court, I mean, in this instance, we're sitting, you know, we're the judge. And, and you wouldn't be surprised if the judge looked over to you and said, hey, I don't think, you know, you have the burden of proof and you haven't met it. I mean, that's like fundamental to the decision, so, yeah, I don't think we usually go into that. But I think unfortunately, in this context, it's very important language to, to accomplish what I think we need to do. You know what I'm saying?
Is it an issue?
I get it.
Yeah, is it, is it an issue to cite cases in our arguments that were not actually presented? And the documents submitted to us, like, for instance, you know.
Where would you find that? Where would you see that? Just as an example.
Yeah, thirty-six.
Yeah, thirty-five or thirty-six, right? Thirty-fives especially.
Oh, you know what? I may have added a number, I added some numbers. Doesn't look like everyone else's maybe now.
Yeah, no, it's thirty-five.
That was part of my thought, too, is reciting case law and, you know, tort. I've been out of practice too long, but. I just, if, if it hasn't been submitted to us, can we cite it? Obviously, we can cite all of the. Documents that have been presented, which on numerous cases have been, we're pointing out, you know, emails or pointing out documentation that has been submitted by either party. But those are actually submitted by applicants or the town in their support, either way. And I don't know the answer to that, that's why I'm sort of asking.
Well, I, I guess I have two, two questions on that, and again, it's something we all can discuss, but. But my first would be, I don't know what the harm really is, and secondly, it's, it's almost like judicial notice where it, it just is out there. And it is what it is. It doesn't need to be in front of us necessarily to comment on it, because it's out there, it's, it's fact, it's, it's a case. So, I mean, they have so many cases that they've cited in there, you know, it's the same thing, it's a, whether or not it's a proportionate response would be my response. You know what I mean?
So you, you would regard it as just good counsel that, you know, there's, there's an issue here that supports this position and.
Correct.
Out there and available and, and, you know, that's.
Correct.
That's kind of the way I read it, you know.
Particularly in response to their, you know, their claims and their citations of. No, we don't agree with that. This is what we're, we're using this as some of the basis of our facts.
Okay. Andrea, though, you, you do have some concerns about probably thirty-six, and there's another reference in there now. Do you have some proposed? Thought about how you would like to do that differently? Related to the comments, you know, made related to your comments?
Take your name out.
I, yeah, I guess, boy, I, I don't have a problem having you make a motion where you cite yourself. I have no problem with that at all. And in fact, I think it's kind of important, it's, it's cogently stated, and it's, it's really the, you said it again tonight, it's the nub of the argument. I mean, a lot of it, you know, so I don't have a problem with you. Describing what you've said at the last meeting. I have no problem with that at all, and I think you've got to kind of take it in context of what we're trying to accomplish, you know?
Yeah.
I think it would be as simple, really, as instead of as board member, right, is I stated, because you did state those things. I, I, do you agree that that is what you stated? There's no issue with what's represented here about what your comments were?
I, without the transcript, I couldn't say word for word, but that, that was definitely the gist of everything that I said with that. I guess that was my other thought, is that we don't have the transcript yet, and it would be nice to be able to quote directly from the transcript. And, and confirm that, but, but, you know, because I just haven't seen it yet.
I don't know what your thought there is, David, because it's just.
Yeah, I, I, I don't have a real responsive thought to that. I mean, if you think you need that, that's something that we should probably know.
I mean, they don't have you quoted in here.
That is correct. I don't believe you are actually quotation mark quoted.
No.
Now, there's a few there.
Oh, there is, yep.
Yes, there.
Oh, yeah, I missed that one.
There's at least two, I, I know, I know of at least two places where there's quote marks, which sounds like things that I said. But I talk so much, who knows, I can't.
Well, I guess the bottom line here is we're not necessarily inferring here, this is exactly, exactly what you said. But I know, I guess it says, as board member Ray stated, is, you know, again, if, if. If the flavor of what's here, Andrea, is not a misrepresentation of what your thought is, because I'm sure your thought hasn't changed on this from last month. So if that's the case, then if one word is a little different, as long as it's not materially. This is what we're going to rely on, not the testimony, I mean.
Yeah, you can take the quotes out, too. I don't know why.
Yeah, yeah, that probably, and, and she would have to say I anyway, and, you know. So I, I, I guess you should read it and suggest whether.
What, Andrea, what, what are you thinking about adding?
Well, and some of it wasn't really, let's see. I added, like, it's my number thirty, but I don't know what it is, so it might be, it's close to thirty. It starts out, ZBA finds that the developer was not required to obtain approval.
Yeah.
I would change that to the ZBA finds that the cross-access easements are not on their face invalid for failure to obtain approval. From the first mortgage, because I, I don't want to make any finding about what they were required to do under the mortgage. They may or may not have been required. I think they were probably required, but that's, doesn't.
I, I got you, I think that's a good change.
Yeah. I also added, like, one of the reasons my numbers are, are off is because, for instance. Numeral.
Excuse me, Andrea, can you try to speak up a little bit there, please? Thank you.
Numeral one, or big I. I added, like, the SMA ils the issuance of the building permit on grounds that the town did not receive required revocable letters of credit. For the access management plan, and then I say, the town has provided proof that it received the three necessary revocable letters of credit. And then this portion of the appeal is denied, so I done, I, I did a little bit of like adding kind of summary statements of. We're talking about letters of credit because they've appealed the issuance for that reason, and then why. What was provided that we're basing our decision on?
Yeah, fine, I, yeah, fine with that, yeah.
Yeah.
That's totally.
That's a lot of what I've real.
But how are we going to incorporate those changes into this document? And allow at least me or the board to look at them and kind of discuss them if, on your proposed change. I mean, do you want to? Can you go through just the, the cross-access easement and suggest your changes, or?
What, okay, well, I mean, I, I don't see this much differently than when we all do any other. Negotiation of, you know, how we complete resolutions, so. You know, again, if, if people are comfortable that these are not substantive as it relates to changing the opinion. And, and David, you're commenting as well, but I guess I don't see it as any different than what we do all the time. We don't, we don't reread it, you know what I mean?
No, but how are we going to know? Yeah, go on, Andrea.
I see, I see this as a little bit different because they're eighteen, nineteen.
We can't hear you, Andrea.
Yeah, it's, for some reason, your volume has gone way down.
Yeah.
Better now?
Little bit.
I I see this as different just in volume. There is a. There's a very large part of that would like to discuss each of these issues and get. Group consent on the gist of it and then table it again for circulation final, you know, and 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 read it next week. I would say, or next month, that that would be, but I wanted to make sure we were had, I would say we need consensus this. About the gist of every single argument, um which we didn't have last month because we were still waiting on documentation. Um, so I would think that that would be how I would lean on this one, only because. I do have, you know, I am, I have some changes, but some of it I haven't even gone through and really. Kind of drill down to see if there's anything else I want to add. Um, and I I just feel like. If we are all sure we're on the same page, the gist of the same thing, we can circulate this and and have it ready. For a quick, a quicker sans discussion uh next month. That's my thinking.
Well, again, you know, if you're suggesting that there's many numerous, you know, substantive changes, then I guess we agree. I mean, we we've only talked about two of the items here, so if if that theme is would go through. The rest of the document, then I guess I would agree with you then.
Yeah, I I think that if if we're gonna make some, if we're gonna make, you know, a a series of changes to this document. I think we need to possibly go through it tonight and then. Kind of get comfortable that we're all on precisely the same page.
Yeah.
And then, yeah.
Yeah, the only thing, Andrea, I would say, though, is that, you know, i- if we're discussing each of these individual items and. You have some semantics or things that, you know, are are really supportive of the agreement, whether we feel this particular item should be denied or not. Then I don't know that we need to go through all of those changes tonight. I think it would be better. And you're also stating that you haven't even done them all, so, you know. Maybe we could go through it unless it's something that's materially changing something, then. I don't I don't know what the point would be of discussing it tonight, you know what I mean?
I I was just thinking that given how. How much time we've spent reviewing all these documents, we probably want to at least touch on each of the arguments.
No, no, that's fine. I I'm not disagreeing with that. I'm not. All I'm saying, though, is that let's just say we're talking about item six. And you're generally supportive of and the rest of the board is, but there's some language that you would propose to to make it clearer or. Whatnot that, you know, to have you do that tonight. I mean, if we're to do that, we might as well finish it, you know what I mean? That's all. And I I don't think you were quite ready to do that, you know, so in that kind of.
Because I were going to be touching on some of these, touching on points that are multiple pages of of commentary, and I don't. I don't think I will have the time or it's productive for the group to sit while I type and formulate sentences and and things like that.
Yeah, I'm agreeing with you. I am. All right. Well, why don't we do this then? I mean, have you, I'm the number two. Uh so we can keep it moving here. I mean, is there anything else material you want to say about number two?
Number two is the cross access easement. I mean, is anyone in the board not agreement with with that argument?
I mean, the concept of going through this tonight and then trying to have you draft your res, you know, finalize the resolution.
I think, I think, David, what we're kind of saying here is that we could go through these each individual sections and see if there's any concerns. Now, if Andrea has one and she'll offer it, if somebody else does, they'll offer it, and then we'll move on to the next. Okay, I I think that's what we're saying, yeah, but not try to craft the changes to number four or number two or number seven.
Yeah, well, and I just meant, I wanted to make sure that, you know, I don't want to be the loudest voice in the room. If other board members disagree with that analysis, you know, but I I have. Will be revising it and will or will revise it to, you know, that argument. Well, it's already that argument. I just might judge the language a little bit.
Okay, I I think we can proceed here, but let's just try to wrap number two up. Is there, does anyone have any other concerns? Other than what we've discussed, we collectively have discussed so far about item two. Or I I. Okay, all right, so then let's move to the the state and county approvals. David, do you have any comments or Andrea on that?
Um. No, I I don't. I think it's, I don't think it's one of the better issues, and I think it's well stated here, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't have, I don't have any substantive comments on that.
Okay, and does anyone else have any concerns about that one, number three? I I don't. And they get laid out pretty well here. Okay, so let's move on to the construction sequencing. This is an interesting one, because it relates to the incentive zoning approval and whatnot. And, you know, what interpretation. Construction sequencing is, so Andrea, do you have any concerns about this one?
Well, I mean, I I did everyone get a chance to read it and do, does anyone have any different opinions about? Whether or not this is considered sequencing versus um state, you know, separate construction stages?
So I probably need to re, I I was up real late watching the election and that this came pretty late. I was busy with. So I I read through it in it pretty fast, so, you know, I think I need to. Re give it another read, but I I thought it seemed pretty well done to me and captured the argument and I. I I think it's, I think it's well done.
Yeah, I I agree, really agree. The only thing I would want to add maybe is this concept of. It's illogical, I think, to deny or to, yeah, deny a building permit, the first building permit in a construction project.
I agree. I think I agree with you a thousand percent. You can come at, you can come at us on the second one, right? But how do you imply sequencing from a single event? It's just, it it's the the logical part of it is, yep. I agree a hundred percent.
So so I ha, I kind of added a little bit of that, just to say that if if we were issuing a second building permit. Two and a half years after the first building permit, there's an argument there that this was being done in stage, but this first building permit. With testimony that the rest of construction would be completed within a reasonable amount of time cannot evidence construction in stages. That that cons, that that kind of concept.
There also, if you recall in the testimony from last month, if you recall it. There was a lot of discussion also about how the real practical part of this whole development was going on. In that, like, for example, that utilities were being placed and other types of access was being placed to other places on the site. It's not like. Just one little tiny spot was being worked on, you know, either. So um. I I I I thought it was pretty representative of what the discussion has been. And, you know, whether there's commonality in um other construction projects and all that is a little. You know, specific to a project itself, but other than that, I I didn't really have any concern about. Okay, does anyone else have any other concerns about number four? Okay, so Andrea, you might have a few little things, and I'm sure there's a way that those could be highlighted in some fashion, you know, obviously.
I I would say part of this, too, is just to provide additional time for everyone to really make sure they're voting yes on it, just because. It's easier with a one-page approval to hear every single word and say, yes, I agree with.
Yeah, I think we agree. I think we're all agreeing to that, yeah. And we've got to have an opportunity if we wait to to be able to review this umpteen times, okay? All right, so how about number five, which is uh? Uh, let's see here.
The first one's that building, building inspector certification on the site plan, which feels very much. Chicken and egg argument, like a very circular discussion in some ways. I I don't mean this writing, I mean that the concept of it um in general.
Okay.
It it seems like it's an attempt to um. To attack the site plan via uh, you know, an argument that really almost isn't relevant to us. The site plan's done, it's signed, it's filed, it's.
Yeah, correct. I I agree, and and, you know, I don't think that. You know, if if the building inspector had some concern about that, he certainly had the opportunity to do something about it. When the approvals were done, so I I don't know. Again, it's, it is like a chicken and an egg to go back to it. I, it just seems like a circular thing.
Uh, there there was also a comment made in um town's response. This specific issue is putting form over substance, and I liked that quote, that. These have been substantially reviewed, they've been um certified. Uh, based on the town's practice and that that to. To sustain an appeal based on complete moot form over the substance of that approval. Uh, seems to kind of undo good work of the town.
Right. Yeah, you don't reach the signing block without having satisfied all the relevant parties in the town that need to relate to. You know, dealing from the planning board's perspective with a site plan.
Yeah. Um, Dave, do you have a problem with that me kind of cannibalizing a little bit of? I I I'm forgetting the attorney's name, Man Cuso, right? His response and with the boner, that form over substance language. Because that.
Yeah, no, that that, no, I have no problem with that at all. No, the the fact is that. It seems to me that this argument is almost like requesting that we second guess the um. You know, the the building, we second guess the approval of the site plan, and it just seems to be. Like you were saying before, Andrea, like looking at the mortgages, and that's just not, that's not a job. That's not the time, you know.
Yeah, I don't think that's the building inspector's job, just.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I don't like that site plan. Okay, well.
Okay. All right, so Andrea, you might have a few little things here. Okay, and then B relates to the pedestrian easements, so. I don't know, thoughts here? David, do you have any thoughts on this?
Obviously, this one is a little bit more um. Legalistic because of the determinations that have been made by the courts. And the, you know, but again, it's it's an in-depth analysis of what's, you know, is there a state requirement to do this in some way? It it seems so um. Irre- irrelevant to what we're what we're doing here today, it's just. It's hard to describe, but.
Yeah, I I didn't have any specific changes, but I I will be honest, I got a little. But, you know, by by page fifteen, I was losing it a little bit. Um, I I did, I did want to kind of review that, but yeah, I I think that's going to be, well, and I think there was a point, I can't remember if it was in a document. Although it may have been in this, in the approval drafted, um, the point that. They didn't really make the argument or produce evidence that. Um. That uh legislative approval, it was just more like they asked the question, like, could it be?
It's it, right, that's, I guess that's a better way of describing what I, irrelevant. It's all speculative. It's all just a could be, could be. And again, that's not the building inspector, you know, purging to say, oh, wow, it could be, I'm gonna worry about that.
Yeah, because the, yeah, because. As I get one oh one there on page, what, seventeen, I think it, that's a good sort of little summation here to suggest that. You know, there isn't really been any evidence that the town has done something to circumvent these easements, you know?
And actually, there's a lot of testimony in here, the opposite, actually, I think. It, I think when you read this, Andrea, I think you'll see if you take, you know, get into it a little bit. There's a lot of evidence here that it's not a park. I mean, there's a lot of statements I think are factually supported. That says it's it's not appropriate.
Right.
Well, it would be the worst park in Brighton if that's what it is.
Okay, all right. Does anyone else have any concerns with this? Okay, about them apples. All right.
Go on, I'm sorry, Andrea.
I was saying, as as the gist of it's written, taking a poll, I just want to make sure that. The board is in favor of denying the appeal. As we've discussed these specific issues going into this denial. I'm obviously in favor of denying the this appeal.
Okay. Subject to some ma- modification of these documents.
I think in general, she is, rather than that.
Yes, yeah, just from the spirit of it, yeah.
I I think you're right. I think, uh, if there's another opinion with respect to that or support of that, I think that'd be important to know.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay, so why why don't we go, why why don't we go down each person then and just, let's just for the record, understand that. So Judy, do you have? Any concerns of the?
Well, I want to just say to David that I appreciate you writing both ways, because I I um. I did read with great interest the affirming the appeal and it's as to the other part, which is more in depth, but um. And I've talked to Rick about it, too, because I've been torn, but um at first I thought part of it was a matter of semantics, but I. I have learned that really it it, there is a difference, so I I tend to go along with um.
Okay.
Andrea.
Okay, good. All right, Katie?
I'm co- I'm comfortable with it, yeah.
Okay, subject to what suggestions there might need to make it clear or whatnot, okay?
Yeah.
How about Kathy?
I agree as well.
Okay. All right, and Ms. Watson?
I agree with denying.
Okay, and I do as well. Okay.
Um, that, um, just so that we're all on the same page, we just basically went through one of the resolutions. Um, we have two applications, so obviously we're going to have two resolutions. The um resolutions are a little different because um BGR did did um touch on a couple of different items. A lot of it's the same, so a lot of the um changes that we just made to the Save Monroe, we're going to carry over to the BGR. But David, do you want to just touch on a couple of the?
I I think if you pull, if you pull up the BGR one, it it seemed, and I'm, I've gone through this quite a few times. I mean, anybody wants to. Correct me, you can, but I think that only really the issues that are additional. Or let's say the ones that appear to have some, you know, merit are the uh, that would be, you'd want to discuss. Is the trail amenity at number uh eight on page sixteen of the BGR. I don't think that is raised in the other um, um, in the other application. I don't know if anybody got a a chance to read that specific section.
Well, it was certainly discussed last month, okay, in the presentation.
Yeah, sorry, that that this.
Page seventeen on the one that I sent over to you.
Oh, it is?
Uh, okay, number eight, page seventeen, trail amenity.
Yeah, no, that that seemed pretty straightforward to me. Given the instruction to like.
I only pointed it out. I mean, it seems to me on that one, it seems pretty clear to me that the. That the, there was a limited requirement prior to the issuance of the building permit that was just really submitting the plans. I I don't know that. To me that that's not.
Yeah.
Their argument's not that persuasive. Then the other thing was, um, the BGR has the incentive that that zoning.
Yeah.
At at six. Which I think is a distinct, is not raised in um. In a Save Monroe's.
Compliance with zoning on page eleven.
Yeah.
And in in essence. We're not here to determine whether or not a compliance with zoning. We're here to determine whether or not a building permit was issued properly.
Yes, and it's not the, not the building inspector's job to second guess the the application of the uh incentive zoning.
Right, that's a town board issue, right?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, agreed. Is there anything else, David, that you would see as?
No, I think those are the two. I mean, I think there are a couple of small ones, but I don't think. Um, I mean, I'd have to go back and look to make sure, but I don't think there, it's a very end. Uh, there is of the BGR. Uh, there is of the BGR, they've got the Department of Health. They've got, oh, under the state and county approvals, I think they've got a couple additional things, but that's about it. Like, other than that, for discussion purposes, you know, they're the same.
Okay.
Andrea, would you agree? I mean, I don't know if you looked at it, but would you agree with that?
Yeah, I mean, I think the issues that weren't overlapping were less factually based, I would say, and easier, I think, to make an argument that it's just not an appropriate reason to deny the building permit.
Yeah, I I think probably if we did each of these separate and then maybe noted that whatever was relevant from nine A oh four, in in addition, a few of these other points, David, I think probably would be helpful.
Okay, you're, you're saying in how we structure this going forward, you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I got that.
Correct, because, okay, okay, so does anyone have anything else they think should be added or should be questioned or should be discussed? You know, subject to re, some revisions that we would look at if we agree to table this again.
And I'm assuming then that since we all went around a roundtable and said we're in agreement on denying the appeal for SMA, that we're similarly, given the, the major arguments are all the same about in agreement regarding denying grassroots.
Yes. I think so. Does anyone disagree with that statement?
No.
Okay, very good. Okay, so Andrea, I guess you're up.
Uh, we're not gonna.
This relates to our plan to, how to move this forward?
Yeah, we want to ta- talk about, because we're not aiming for any more submissions, this is really just time for us to collect to collective, you know, to collect our thoughts and and collectively agree on the factual basis of the denial, so or the, yeah, denial. So how would you suggest?
Yeah, and further time to review the proposed resolution.
Okay.
It's kind of true, the election was last night. It is kind of true.
Well, yeah, there's a lot to read here.
Yeah.
I'm working on a half hour to sleep right now, so.
So Andrea, can I just, just before you make your motion to table, just so we have clarification, are you going to work with David to to get your
Yes.
Changes to him and how do you want to work that? And then get it to me and I'll get it out to everybody?
Yeah, back and and.
Yeah, if that's the board's understanding of how they want to go forward, I would be glad to work with Andrea to accomplish that. I don't know if, that's probably a pretty efficient way to do it. And if somebody has some small tweak next time, you know, after reviewing it, you could call me or we could work that through, but fundamentally, it seems since it's Andrea's going to be making the motion, I I would work with her.
Yeah, and I guess, and I guess what I want to say too is any of the other members, if you do have something as you read through this, that's certainly give, give David a call, give myself a call, give Dennis a call, you know, and and we'll get that as part of the, the revisions to talk about next time. So don't feel, don't feel like you can't add to this discussion.
Could we also agree, and I don't know that it has to be in the the table motion, but that we get this assignment completed at least so that we could get this at least one week before the meeting day?
Yes.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay. Be in the motion for specific performance by these two attorneys, but, you know. All right.
Real, real quick, should I put in the tabling that we're for additional time to review the language of a proposed motion to deny or just proposed motion?
Proposed motion.
I would say just proposed motion, yeah.
Um, and I will say this, even if I had not a single change to the motion, I would still want some additional time to review it more in detail before I'm committed to it.
I certainly understand.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Yeah, I get a couple of members have the same thing, so I think we're good on that, yeah.
Okay, so I move to table application nine A dash oh four dash twenty in order to provide additional time for the board to review and finalize the language of a proposed motion.
I second that.
I'm sorry, could it additional time to review and?
Finalize the language of a proposed, yep.
Okay. Okay, the motion is to table. Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Mr. Mites?
Yes.
Ms. Dale?
Yes.
Ms. Schwartz?
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
And Ms. Tompkins, right?
Yes.
Motion to table carries.
Okay, all right, so then we have the grasp, the ten A oh four.
I move to table ten A, application ten A dash oh two dash twenty in order to allow for additional time to review and finalize the language of a proposed motion.
Second.
Second? Judy with the second?
Yes.
The motion, the motion is to table. Ms. Dale?
Yes.
Mr. Mites?
Yes.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Ms. Schwartz?
Yes.
Ms. Tompkins, right?
Yes.
Motion to table carries.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. Ms. Watson, I hope you feel better.
Yeah. Good luck. Real quick, we got a letter from Nixon regarding the make.
No, that, I I assume that application is coming to us for our December meeting.
Okay, so.
Which I thought originally was going to be on this meeting, but they held off for a month. So hang on to that, because I'm sure there's going to be other other letters that will be coming forth along with their use variance application. Um, and I will say that I know last month I told you guys that be prepared for a heavy November. Well, a lot of that stuff that was going to be in our heavy November got pushed to December.
Oh, boy.
Please prepare yourself for a rather heavy December meeting.
So that's the second December.
Summer second, yes. Everybody going to be here?
Yeah.
Where can we go, Rick? Where can we go?
Good point. That's a very good point.
You drive around in a circle, I guess, but that's probably about it.
To your winter home.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good, good night and a good Thanksgiving holiday.
Yeah, okay, thank you, everybody.
David, hang on for a sec.
Oh.
David, hang, hang on for a sec.
Rest of it, can you go?
Dennis, you can hang on to it.
Oh, boy. Thanks very much.
All right.
That means just gotta hang on to.
Yeah, he's just gotta hang on for a couple of seconds.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. He, he didn't mind missing Dancing With The Stars, don't worry.
Do we need to record this part? No, this is just a little discussion.
Make sure you're clean.
Meeting, the meeting's over, so.
Yeah, but some people are still on.
He'll, we'll take care of it.
All right.